They had masks on. They had some...
Y'all ready? The sooner the better. Got to get started to finish, right?
Yeah.
I'd like to call to order the October 15th of 2012 City Commission meeting for Shawnee. Call or roll, please.
Stevens.
Here.
Aggie.
Here.
Harrod.
Here.
Maynard.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Woodringer.
Smith.
Here.
We do have a quorum, okay? Our invocation again today will be if we'll all stand, we will recite the Lord's Prayer, please.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Commissioner Hall will lead us in the flag salute.
Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would consider approval of the agenda that we have in front of us. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Linda Aggie, second. Call or roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Aggie.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
I would like to, before we move to the next item, recognize Mr. Jim Palinkas here, who is filling in for our city attorney, Mary Ann, who's not doing very well, very sick. And we're sorry to hear that, but we're glad to have you here, Jim. And he'll be our keeping us straight tonight, so hopefully.
Good luck.
Good luck. Our next items, consider approval of the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion from...
So moved.
Mr. Winteringer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall. Call or roll, please.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Aggie.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Next item is citizens' participation. We welcome comments from the people here that would like to share something with us. Please feel free to do so. Would anyone like to share their thoughts with us? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the next one. This is Family Promise Week. I have a proclamation on Family Promise Week. Is there anyone here from...
Here.
Your name?
Peggy Johnson.
Nice having you here, Peggy. We'll face that way, Peggy, okay? On behalf of the citizens of Shawnee, Oklahoma, Mayor Wes Maynard does hereby proclaim the week of October the 14th through 2012 as Family Promise of Shawnee. Whereas homelessness in and does affect entire families in the community, and whereas Family Promise of Shawnee offers help and hope to regain their self-sufficiency to homeless families with children and homeless pregnant women through the cooperative efforts of the local congregations, businesses, social service programs, educational institutions, and individual efforts, and whereas the volunteers of Family Promise of Shawnee dedicate themselves to this program by offering hope when all is lost, dignity when others look away, and recognition for the value of the human spirit. And whereas the purpose of Family Promise of Shawnee is to inspire others to recognize the intimate need of dignity and hope for all human beings, all citizens of Shawnee are encouraged to be involved with Family Promise of Shawnee. Now therefore, I Wes Maynard, Mayor of the City of Shawnee of Oklahoma, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim the week of October the 14th through 20 as Family Promise Week of Shawnee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Feel free to...
All right, I just want to thank you for the proclamation. We get this annually, and it brings public awareness to our program of what we're doing in the community. And as most of you know, we serve homeless families with children. Our core focus is homeless children in the community. And our goal at Family Promise is to offer them a hand up rather than a handout. We have a vast volunteer base in this community, and we're very proud to offer the services that we do. So thank you.
Thank you. Why don't you come and say that? Next item is no texting while driving proclamation. This is one of my pet peeves, so let you know. When I drive down I-40 and see people reading a book or texting on I-40 going all over. So, you know, to me, it is something that we all need to be aware of, and not just a day, but all the time. Surely, none of one in this room will text and drive. We can count on that, right? On behalf of citizens of Shawnee, I, Mayor Wes Maynard, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October the 16th, as No Texting While Driving Day. Whereas the City of Shawnee holds the health and safety of its citizens as a primary concern, and whereas text messaging is the main mode of communication for most American teenagers, with half of all teens sending between 21 and 70 texts a day, and expecting a reply within the next five minutes. And whereas texting while driving takes one's eyes off the road for an average of five seconds, and whereas according to an AT&amp;T survey, 43% of American teenage drivers admitted to texting while driving, even though 97% of them know it is dangerous. And 77% of the teenagers surveyed reported observing their parents, we read that again, their parents texting while driving. And whereas a recent university study showed those who send text messages while driving are 23 more times likely to crash. And whereas a driver that sends a text message while driving not only jeopardizes his or her safety, but also the safety of passengers, pedestrians, and other drivers. Now therefore, I Wes Maynard, Mayor of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, that is tomorrow, October the 16th, as No Texting While Driving Day. You bet.
I just hope everybody will take this to heart. I know that. I'm cautioning my children all the time, and my husband, yeah, cellphone usage, so just be careful while you drive and keep your eyes on the road. Thank you.
Mayor, I've got to tell this story.
Okay.
I was stopped late in Sanger, Texas, about 1 o'clock Saturday, and I pulled up to the stop sign, and below the stop sign, they designed $200 fine for texting or talking on the phone. And the little girl sitting in front of me was sitting there texting. There wasn't any car coming anywhere, but she was sitting there. I could see that she was texting. And there wasn't anybody around, a honk, pointed to the sign, the $200 fine. I guess as long as she thought she stopped at the stop sign, that was the sign.
Maybe you could have been like Barney Fife. Citizens arrest. Citizens arrest. Well, again, I don't think we can talk about this enough. This is very serious things, and when we start talking about people texting and talking on the cellphone and driving, and it is just difficult, I know probably for our chief police to enforce if we take some action, but we still have to caution everybody to stop and think when they do that, so that everyone's safety in our community is better off. Our city manager has a presentation of the employee of the month, of course.
Mr. Chairman, Lisa Lassion is the employee of the month. I think Phyllis ought to keep this.
I want to know who their boyfriend is, whether they...
He was the mayor for a while. He just came up here and sat down.
Oh, okay. I'd like, I don't know how many of you know, this is Lisa Lassion. She's a deputy city clerk in my office. She does a wonderful job. The reason you have an agenda today is because of Lisa.
That's right.
She had to get it out late Friday afternoon, and she was by herself, and she was a real trooper. Although she was nominated for employee of the month before that, she would have gotten it regardless now because of that. I appreciate all that she does for me, and thank you for everything you do for the city.
Oh, thank you.
things, but in the short time that I have been involved with this city government, there are a lot of people here in this organization that deserve to be employees of the month because there's some great people working at this city, and it's exciting to be around them and see that occurring. Our next item is a public hearing, and consider an ordinance to rezone property at 400 West MacArthur from C1 neighborhood to C3 automotive, commercial, and recreation. Case number P-14-12, applicant Don DeGraffen, read. I'd ask for a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commission members. Case P-14-12 is a rezoned request that will facilitate the redevelopment of this commercial corner in Shawnee from its essentially vacant condition now to a restaurant. The existing boomerang located nearby, along Kikapu, will be relocated to this site, and planning commission unanimously recommended approval at their meeting on October 3rd. And the request is in conformance with the city's conference of plan. It is a small site, but it is also a small structure that's proposed, and it has kind of a retro diner aesthetic to it, so it should be kind of a neat design for Shawnee. And the parking is all located in the rear as well, so it will have a nice presence from MacArthur Street as well. That said, staff does concur with the planning commission, does recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I notice there's part of a building on that lot. Are they going to utilize that, or are they not?
I think they may. I think they may. They've saved that, and they'd like to incorporate it somehow into the new structure. There's, that's certainly up to them. There's no, there's no, you know, building code or zoning code advantage to that, but if they want to do that, they certainly can.
Any other questions, honey? Okay. I'll open the public hearing. I ask, anyone like to speak in favor of that? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to that? Well then, I'll close the public hearing. We have received the staff's recommendation. Any further discussion, ladies and gentlemen, on the commission? Okay, I'll call for a motion, please.
What move we? Rezone the properties recommended by the planning commission and the planning department?
Second.
Second. Mr. Palinkas, could you read the title of the ordinance, please, sir?
An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, to its lots 15 and 16, Block 6, HETI, Eddie A. Brown subdivision, Block 6, Y. addition to the City of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat thereof. Rezoning said property from C1 neighborhood commercial to C3 automotive, commercial, and recreation district, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Shawnee accordingly.
So read. Call or roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Aggie.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
The next item is a public hearing, and consider an ordinance to rezone the property at 8331 North Harrison from A1 agriculture to, I guess it's I-2 light industrial. The case number P-15-12 applicant is Clayton Eads. I'll ask for a staff report on that one, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I will be speaking on both agenda item number seven and number eight in your packets. They are related and do concern the same property. Agenda item number seven is the rezon request, and agenda item number eight is the preliminary plat request. Starting with number seven, case P-15-12, the applicant is requesting a rezon to light industrial, as you noted, sir. The property is adjacent to other light industrial uses. The immediate intended use is to develop a portion of the property for storage units, and you'll see that reflected more clearly under agenda item number eight and the preliminary plat when you look at some of the proposed uses. And then the remainder of the property would be developed over time through other projects that aren't identified at this time. The planning commission did recommend approval. Staff concurs with that recommendation and does believe that it is in conformance with the city's long-range plans, and that the, it is also in conformance with the surrounding neighborhood and with the existing and planned future land use in the area. You'll note on the preliminary plat, which on your packet, I think comes in on about page 90 or 89 on the iPad, you'll see Phase 1 clearly identified with some structures noted, and that is the proposed storage facility. And everything else is very conceptual. There's some existing development right at the corner, and that will remain, some existing structures at the corner, residential building, and that will remain for the time being. You'll also notice on the preliminary plat that there's an area, significant area on the eastern portion of the plat that is within the 100-year floodplain, and that area is not, will not be able to be developed right now under our ordinances. However, I know that the applicant is working with their engineer to see what kind of store water modifications can be made, and if that floodplain can be reduced so that that can also be developed in the future. But I just wanted to point that out as well, let you know that we are in, you would be in conformance with our ordinance approving the preliminary plat as recommended by the commission because there are conditions that address the floodplain and do not authorize development in there at this time. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on either the rezon or the preliminary plat case.
Is there no questions, then? Thank you, Justin. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on this matter. Anyone like to speak in favor of it? Please state your name.
Melissa Mahaffey.
Okay.
I'm sure.
Great.
I'm one of the owners of the property, and we are looking at rezoning this property located at 8331, 8331 North Harrison, from agriculture to I-1 light industrial. This allows anything from retail storages to small warehouses, and we are looking at any of these options at this time. And our plans for the foreseeable future is to put storage units on those, on that land. Any questions?
No, thanks, Melissa.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this proposal? Okay. I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, any discussion in this matter?
Justin wants this rezoned. Does he have to come back to do any additional zoning in there?
They do not, sir, unless, unless a proposed use in the future requires a conditional use permit, which would require approval by this body.
So whatever, he's on the whole area then?
Yes, sir. As requested, I think it's about 17 or 18 acres.
Right. Is that the, I assume that's a railroad track running down. Do part of that, is there a pipeline, or what is it?
There is a large easement through there, mm-hmm, and pipeline, I believe.
Any other, any other discussion matters for Justin or anyone? Okay, I'll call for a motion.
What move, he's on the property as recommended by the staff and planning commission.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Harrod. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Hall, second it. Call for the motion, please. Although you get to read that later. You want to read it now? Go ahead.
An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, to its, the south half of the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 17, Township 11 North, Range 4 East of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma. Less than except a tract of land described as beginning at the southwest corner of said southwest quarter, thence north 0 degrees 1 minute 6 seconds along the west line of said southwest quarter, a distance of 658.69 feet, thence north 89 degrees 24 minutes 13 seconds east, a distance of 113.43 feet, thence south 0 degrees 3 minutes 12 seconds east, a distance of 420.96 feet, thence south 1 degree 15 minutes 30 seconds east, a distance of 237.77 feet to a point on the south line of said southwest quarter, thence south 89 degrees 25 minutes 18 seconds west along said south line, a distance of 118.83 feet to the point of beginning, and less than except a tract 150 feet by 150 feet at the southwest corner of said tract, according to the recorded plat thereof. Rezoning said property from A1 agricultural to I-1, oh, I'm sorry, I-2 light industrial, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Shawnee accordingly.
I'll call for a motion on this matter.
Call for a roll.
I'm sorry, call or roll. Okay, I'm sorry.
Harrod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Aggie.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Item number eight, I guess I'm a little bit confused here, meaning you said what you spoke of, you spoke in favor of this item also, didn't you, in your previous discussion here? Do we have any questions for him, I believe, or anything?
It's preliminary plat for the same property, right?
Yes, sir. It's preliminary plat for the same property, with the conditions identified on page 102 on the planning commission, recommended approval, subject to those conditions.
Any questions? I mean, I kind of thought we might have covered them in the previous...
There's some conditions on there. I'll check.
The floodplain.
He referred to the floodplain. What are some other conditions that are on there?
Conditions are pretty standard conditions, with the exception of the notation regarding the floodplain, and the fact that by ordinance, really, all you can, all the city can recommend at this time for preliminary plat are those lots that are not within the designated floodplain. And so that's reflected in the recommendation of approving Phase 1 lots 1, 3, and 4, subject to six conditions. And for the benefit of the commission, too, you will receive a final plat as well, so before development occurs on this property, you will see a final plat, and improvement plans will be submitted, so you will have an opportunity to see this project again in that regard.
What, on that item four sidewalks, will that be available to do in lieu of sidewalks on that project?
I think that'd be an ideal location to do that. Yes, sir.
All right, I move we approve the preliminary plat plan with, as recommended by the planning department, with the four, or six conditions.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Smith. Do we need to read this item? I don't think so, do we? Huh? Okay, I'll, call or roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Aggie.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Commissioner Harris.
Item number nine. Public hearing, and consideration of an ordinance to rezone property at 3300 North Union from R1 residential single-family dwelling to R3 multiple-family dwelling. Case number P-16-12, applicant Mike Little Construction. I see that it's being, staff has recommended it be deferred to the November commission meeting at request of an act of the applicant. Can I call for a motion? So someone want to defer? I'll make a motion.
Yeah, so I will.
Okay. James, Mr. Harrod made a motion to defer it until November.
That is the motion.
Yeah. Second.
Second.
Okay, but Mr. Hall. Okay. Call or roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Aggie.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Next item is a public hearing, and consideration of an ordinance to rezone property at 906 East Independence, C1 neighborhood commercial to C3 automotive, commercial, and recreation. Case number P-17-12, applicant is O'Reilly Automotive Stores. Staff report at this time?
This request, under P-17-12, would facilitate the expansion of the existing O'Reilly Auto Card Store located at Independence and Harrison. The parcel is approximately 14,500 square feet, and the existing zoning is C1. The request is to rezone the property to C3, which is a higher intensity commercial zoning. That would allow the property to, that would allow that piece of the property to match the existing zoning of the existing store, as well as neighboring zonings as well to the southwest and east. And it would just better facilitate expansion of the store, expansion of the parking lot, and make it all contiguous in terms of zoning. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval, and staff concurs with that. Are there any questions?
Are that, are they two separate, actually, lots?
They are actually, this isn't actually, this is actually a separate piece of property.
Is it behind it, or on this, directly toward, is that toward the bank?
Yes, sir. It's in between the existing building and the bank.
I didn't remember that much space when I looked at that.
There is a lot there.
Yeah, there is, uh-huh, okay. Any other questions of Justin?
It's in related. When are they going to start the one on Kikapu? How's that coming?
We have this plans in under review right now, so I believe that will start definitely before the end of the year.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll open the public hearing. I ask for those who wish to speak in favor of this. Come forward, all right. Would anyone like to speak in opposition to this? Well, I will close the public hearing, and I'll ask the city attorney to read the title of the ordinance, please, sir.
An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, to its, a tract of land described as beginning at a point 198 feet east of the southwest corner of the southwest quarter of Section 8, Township 10 North, Range 4 East of Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, thence north 220 feet, thence east 66 feet, thence south 200 feet, thence west 66 feet to the point of beginning, according to the recorded plat thereof. Rezoning said property from C2 neighborhood commercial to C3 automotive, commercial, and recreation, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Shawnee accordingly.
I'll call for a motion on this matter?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Winteringer, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Linda, Commissioner Aggie, that's fine. That's great. That is great. Call or roll, please. That is great. Call a roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Aggie. Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall. Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens. Aye.
Next item is consideration of approval of the final plat for Shawnee Medical Center located at Keithley Road and MacArthur Street. Case number S twelve dash twelve. Applicant is Shawnee Real Estate Holdings LLC. Recommendation from them is it be deferred to the November planning commission meeting at the request of the applicant. Have a motion by Commissioner Harrod. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Hall, call a roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Aggie.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Next item is a consideration of approval of preliminary plat for Belmont Park Edition located at Acme Road and MacArthur Street. Case number S thirteen dash twelve. Applicant Jay Bentley Development LLC.
I thought we'd already approved this once, I may.
You approved the rezone in March, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Justin, would you like to give us a report here and your recommendation?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This agenda item as well as the next agenda item are both related to the Belmont Park Edition project. And the applicant is requesting both preliminary and final plat approval. In March of two thousand and twelve, a rezone was approved, that rezoned this property R-three and a small portion of it C-three. And the applicant has returned and prepared the necessary planning documents and engineering documents for a portion of the property zoned R-three and does plan to build twenty-five townhome-style multifamily units on the property. Planning commission had an opportunity to review the project and did unanimously recommend approval for both the preliminary and final plat. There were five recommended conditions, all pretty straightforward. Don't think I need even, even need to note anything out of the ordinary with the requirements. There is a sidewalk required along Acme Road as well as MacArthur, although the first phase of, of the development occurs entirely along the Acme Road frontage. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I see the drain and I, is that the area where we, kind of on the east side, they've connected to run the things to the casino? They were digging there.
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that a low area? Is that able to be filled in, or is that a flood plain or?
There, there's actually not flood plain on this property. There is, there is like what could be described as a low area and, and it's kind of heavily wooded through there.
Right.
And a portion of that will be developed for their stormwater controls. There will be a stormwater detention pond built as part of this project to make sure it doesn't impact any adjacent properties. Some of the digging that you saw that was occurring on this property was really part of city right-of-way and improvements that were, that were made to the lift station there. And those improvements to the lift station will facilitate this development and also facilitate the improvements at the casino and at the kickoff beside. So there's a number of developments going on, kind of right in this vicinity, and they're all going to be benefited by those improvements to the lift station.
Will the building restrictions be far enough back in case forty-fifth, I mean, in case Acme Road needs to be widened down the road, let's say? We'd be fortunate enough to get an exit or something off the interstate.
Very, very good question. And as part of this plat, it's, it's hard to, to see if you don't know exactly what you're looking for, but as part of the final plat, when it's signed and recorded, there is an additional right-of-way dedication of seventeen additional feet in addition to the statutory thirty-three feet. So, and that is in our subdivision requirement, so as part of this process, the applicant is essentially giving additional right-of-way to the city so that if we, if we do want to widen it, we have that in the future and we're not in a situation where we have to purchase right-of-way.
Great. Great. Other questions, I mean? I, I. Do we need to read this? I didn't think so. So let's just call for the motion.
Motion to approve, as recommended by staff.
Mr. Hall, Commissioner Hall, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Winteringer. Call a roll, please.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Aggie.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Next item is consideration of approval of the final plat for Belmont Park Edition located at Acme Road and MacArthur Street. Case number S fourteen dash twelve. Applicant Jay Bentley Develop. Item, item, I think we kind of got the report already on this item. Discussion, any further discussion on this matter? Well, I'll call for a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve.
One second.
Okay. Motion to approve, and we have a second. Call a roll, please.
Aggie.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Next item is consider a resolution in support of passage of state question seven six four addressing Oklahoma's water infrastructure needs. Mr. Manager, City Manager, would you talk to us about this, please, sir?
Normally, I wouldn't put things on the agenda that say vote yes, but this is an important one that we need to take a look at. State Chamber, O.R.V., our local chamber, all have weighed in on this particular issue and think it's a good idea. Basically, before you is state question seven sixty-four that'll be on the ballot here in a couple of weeks. And what it basically does is expand the opportunity for municipal water and sewer systems to tap into revolving loan fund money at the state level. We have done that many, many times in the past. It's at very low interest rates. They understand municipal water and sewer system authorities. So if it pleases the commission, state question seven sixty-four will be on the ballot in a couple of weeks. And y'all's action tonight would just be an affirmative action or not to, to send to the state chamber and to our citizens what, what we'd like to see them do with the polls. Normally, again, I wouldn't put this on the city commission's agenda because it's got, it's got that flair of, you know, we're influencing our voters. But this is a good thing for cities and, and counties and rural wa, water districts that are in the water and sewer treatment and distribution business. If I can answer any questions, I will.
He made a, go ahead, Linda. I'm sorry, you go first.
I just had a question as I read this resolution. How did the city of Shawnee save two million dollars by taking advantage of this?
Over the years, with the loans that we've taken out, the interest rate is much lower than you can go to a bank to get. So we've saved several million dollars over the years.
Close costs are less.
Okay.
All the fees are less.
So true, for example, with our, with our pumps and control project, that project was considered a green project, which meant that because the energy usage on the new pumps that we installed were much more efficient, energy efficient than the old ones that were out there, we had like a two-hundred-thousand-dollar forgiveness on that loan back. And that's also part of the money savings that we get, so.
I, I have a question. If we are getting that, we're already utilizing that system, does this mean that, that we're getting something that other cities haven't been able to get? That, why is it being, have to be passed, I guess? I'm just curious. I don't understand that.
Essentially, I mean, you, you have to, your debt-to-income ratio in your water and sewer system has to pass muster, just like it would with a bank.
Okay.
But in, so every city's available to be able to apply for it. We have applied for it. Many other, every city municipal water system is available to apply for. The difference here is that there, the states identified a lot of future needs for cities in our state for having these dollars available to them so that they can improve and expand their systems. Because the, the amount that we have now that's available in the revolving loan fund is loaned out. And keep in mind, the cities pay this. The only time that we as taxpayers of this state wouldn't, would have to pay it is if a city defaulted. But they do a pretty darn good job of making sure that, that your, your debt-to-income ratio in your water systems is what it's supposed to be before they loan you the money.
Okay, sir. Any other questions?
We're going to give this information to the press, too?
Yes, sir.
Linda, any more?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Thank you. But Mr. Commissioner Harrod, you need to read this, I guess.
A resolution supporting passage of state question seven sixty-four to address Oklahoma's water infrastructure needs.
Call a roll, please.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Aggie.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number fifteen, acknowledge the sales tax report received October twenty-twelve.
Well, we've had better news this month than last month.
Thank you.
Okay. We were up seventy-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars or five-point-eight-six percent compared to last year receipts. We received almost one-point-four million dollars, and I did talk to the Oklahoma, we talked to the Oklahoma Tax Commission, and we should be getting about another thirty thousand dollars for the tax-free weekend. So that will make us a little bit over a hundred and five thousand dollars up this month.
That's up a hundred and some thousand dollars.
From last year.
Okay.
But, so with the cumulative for the fiscal year, we're still down about one percent, but we are making strides and gaining some. But overall, our revenues are above projected, overall revenues.
Any questions?
Why wouldn't no tax day be included with all the rest of it?
I think we have to figure out different. We get a check every year.
Some, some of our retailers report on a monthly basis, others are two weeks behind, and one's estimated. So they have to gather all that information before they confirm what that money is.
I have a question on this rebate for people that don't understand it like myself. Does that come out of the state? Does they just send us a check for?
They give an estimate of what was spent here in Shawnee, and they give us our fair share of the sales tax. And it does come out of the state.
Didn't realize that. I did not realize that.
So the tax-free weekend, we don't lose anything.
It's very good.
Well, we still pay for it in taxes.
But I guess, now that you're on a roll and are bringing good news, do you think you can keep this up?
I hope. There's one key, shop Shawnee.
That's right. Shop Shawnee. That's a great one. Next item, consider bids and proposals. Proposal to replace city hall phone system. Been requested that we defer this to the second meeting in January. Mr. Lynch?
Evening, Mayor Commissioners, Don Lynch, Emergency Management Director. Internal staff working group consisting of our staff in the Emergency Management Department and Chief Information Officer reviewed the seven proposals that were submitted concerning this system. We have narrowed those down to the four proposals from the least cost forward. The other proposals that, that have been separated had no features or anything that, that is not already covered in the four lowest-cost proposals that we received. We are asking to defer this to January to allow us to continue to study those proposals, to allow us to do the checks with the references that are given. There are a couple of the, the types of systems that we haven't seen before. As we were doing our preliminary research, we'd like to look at those phone systems that are actually in use, talk to the people that are using them and see how they work. And then also, because there's some diversity in the information that is proposed, we'd like to talk to at least a couple of the vendors, if not all four of the vendors, again, to make sure that they have captured everything in their proposal because there seems to be some question, at least in staff's mind, are they covering everything that they need to cover? This is a pretty important endeavor, something that we're going to be spending a lot of money on, using a lot for hopefully a long time in the city. We want to make sure that we take the time and do it right as we're going forward with that. So that's our, our reason for requesting the continued deferral of this item. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
I guess, okay, then we need to, I'll entertain a motion to divert.
Motion. Second.
Okay. Motion, Mr. Smith and Mr. Winteringer, a second. Call a roll, please.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Aggie.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will recess our city commission and go to the Shawnee Municipal Authority agenda. And I'll call to order the Shawnee Municipal Authority of October the fifteenth, twenty-twelve. Call a roll, please.
You don't have to call a roll.
I don't have to after that, huh? Says de lecre. Okay, sorry about that. First item is consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved. Check it.
Motion and a second. Call a roll, please.
I'm sorry, Steve. Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Aggie.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is there any new business? Huh?
Get bids.
I'm sorry, I skipped, consider the bids.
Uh, this, we opened bids for THM analyzer and got one bid, and we've looked it over. Staff recommends awarding the bid for the THM analyzer to Parker Hannah Fan Corporation an amount of thirty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars.
What had we budgeted for that? What had we budgeted for that?
I think it was thirty-eight. Thirty-eight.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on this?
They're going to provide training. It's pretty simple to use, isn't it? Are they going to provide training on how to use it?
Yes. Four hours.
It's pretty simple.
Yes, it's, plus it has online. You can get online and look at it.
Move to approve.
Well, we have a motion to approve this bid. Do I have about a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Hall, call a roll, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Aggie.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Next item is replacement of the screw pumps award.
Staff recommends awarding the screw pump replacement project at the Northside Plant to Wind Construction in the amount of two-hundred-and-three thousand dollars. Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand was budgeted.
What was that comment? What was that last part?
Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand was budgeted.
Excuse me, I didn't hear who you.
Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand was budgeted.
Who is it? What company is it?
Wind.
Lynn?
Wind. W, N, N. We've worked with them before out there and have done a good job.
Questions?
They did the last one or the one before?
They did the one before.
I move we replace the screw pumps for the board to contract the wind construction.
Second. Have a motion to approve and a second. Call a roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Aggie.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, any new business to Shawnee Municipal Authority? Not, I'll move to the next one, administrative reports.
Mr. Chairman, no new business or administrative reports tonight.
Okay, sir. I then will consider a motion to adjourn the Shawnee Municipal Authority.
So moved.
Second. Call a roll, please.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Aggie.
Aye.[1742.32]
Harret? Mayor?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Question carries.
Motion carries. We will now proceed to the Shawnee Airport Authority. Consider approval of the consent agenda, agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a point here. Rex, this question is for Rex or Cindy, and I should know the answer to this question, but our current tenant was a little behind on the rent. Are they caught up? They caught up? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Winteringer?
Have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Call a roll, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Ringer?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
E G?
Aye.
Harret?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Question carries.
Any new business or administrative reports?
Mr. Chairman, no new business or administrative reports tonight.
Okay. Then I'll call for adjournment of the Shawnee Airport Authority.
I'll move.
Have a second. Motion and a second. Call a roll, please.
Harret?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
E G?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Question carries.
We will now return to the City Commission Agenda. Any new business?
Mr. Chairman, no new business this evening.
No new business. Any administrative reports?
Yes, sir, one, I'm very proud to say. T. Short's going to come up and talk to us about a recent occurrence with our ISO rating.
Great.
You may recall, just last month, I believe it was, in Oklahoma City, there was a lot of excitement about the ISO rating that Oklahoma City had attained. I just want to share with you that we're pretty excited in Shawnee, because we also have improved our ISO rating. For those of you that are not familiar with ISO, I'll explain that in just a couple of minutes. I'm sure Mr. Smith probably has some idea of what it is about. I would like to share a few things about that, and following Mr. Maynard's lead, I'm going to do a little reading here versus trying to quote this stuff, if y'all don't mind. In two thousand and eleven, per request, Fire Chief Gibson, the insurance services organization, or ISO, performed an inspection of the services and the capabilities of the fire department to extinguish structured fires. They collect and evaluate information from communities across the United States. ISO then delivers this information into an analyzation process and classifies the fire protection systems for the community through a fire suppression rating system. Basically, what that is, it's a report card for your fire department, and we're very happy with ours at this current time. And I'll, again, we'll get to that just a little bit later. Statistical data on insurance losses bear out relationship between excellent fire protection and fire losses. This data assists insurance companies in the information for marketing, underwriting, and to help establish fair premiums for homeowners. The rating system is done on a scale of one to ten, with one being the best, ten being the least effective. Information gathered by ISO is derived from three primary sources within our community. The first and the one that carries the most weight is the fire department. The second is our water department. The third is our dispatch system that we have in our city. Each one of those play a very significant contributing role. The performance and capabilities of these departments help determine or have a huge effect on our local insurance rates for the citizens of the community. A community investment in fire mitigation is a proven and reliable predictor of future fire losses. Basically, I say all of this, this is the part that we're very, very proud of. Of the fifteen hundred and forty-nine communities within the state of Oklahoma that are examined, there are only six that rate higher than we do.
Come on, would you repeat that again very slowly, please? That's very impressive.
Of fifteen hundred and forty-nine communities across the state of Oklahoma that are evaluated by ISO, there are only six that are better than we are. And that's certainly something that we take pride.
Fantastic.
That puts us at a three slash nine rating for the city of Shawnee. We would love to be a two or a one. We will continue to work to get toward that, but there are many, many stipulations that are holding us back at this time, and we would love to discuss those at a later point in time. Three point nine, three rating goes for the city proper of Shawnee. The nine goes for the lake area. There are a number of significant factors why the nine is for that area out there. And again, we would love to share those ideas and some ideas to correct those. We would love to share those with you at another time when we have a little bit more time and have gone into more detail. The fire department, the water department, and the dispatch system are currently and constantly working to improve the services that we provide. At times, you may see someone from the fire department or the water department doing some very unusual things, and you might wonder what the purpose for those are. They may be testing hydrants, water flowing into the street, and people look at that and go, what a ridiculous thing to do. We're at a water shortage. Maybe the guys from the fire department out doing various things with their equipment, trying to become more familiar with their equipment. All of those things go toward gaining our status with ISO. Painted, each one of our hydrants are painted for a specific purpose in a distinct color. A lot of times, we have people that will go out and paint our hydrants just so they'll match their landscaping, their house color, whatever. We would ask that people do not do that. That has a specific purpose for those being that color. Please don't plant shrubs or flowers around their water hydrants, because even though it may look more aesthetic, it doesn't really help us find those at times, and there may be a situation where that it's needed at your house to put out fires. So please, do not do those kind of things, and encourage others not to do those. Along with many other activities that are done in an effort, not only for the effect that we would like to keep our citizens safe, and that's our primary goal, but it's also pretty nice to be able to save them a little money along the way. And we realize in the fire department that it's, we are in an expensive business. It costs a lot to keep the fire department, and our service available. And we understand it. We want to provide the very best quality service that we can. With great pride, again, I say that we are now a three-nine, coming down from a four-nine as to what we've been for the last several years, and that should reflect on our insurance rates and future dates. It is something you should probably check with your insurance person about. They may be able to save you a little money.
I just got to make some comments about this, folks. I've had the opportunity to spend some time with him and look at this report. And I mean, there's, it's unbelievable the measuring sticks they have for all the things, like how much water will flow through a meter. I could just go on and on. It's a very, very detailed report. But I wish there was some way the citizens of all the citizens Shawnee could realize what this means to our community and what you've done, because you kind of subtly said it affects our insurance rates. But it does. It affects all of our insurance rates and what we pay. And I'm personally going to be calling my insurance agent and saying, I need my rate to go down because of this new rating. And I, but again, what a great job, and we need to tell the world about in Shawnee and in the city limits how wonderful this is and what you've done and your team have done to get that down. And I know to get to the next level is a very expensive, probably, and some other things, but I'm telling you what, that's a great stride that you've done to make this movement, and thank you to you and your staff.
Thank you.
Before you walk away, let me straighten out a few things here. It's not just the lake property. If you live more than a thousand feet away from a fire hydrant and you're in the city of Shawnee, you could be classified as a non.
That is correct, and normally, normally has to do with also being within five miles of a fire station. And so that pretty much takes care of everybody else in the city. It may not be a three, but it won't be a nine.
Right, and I just want the citizens to know that. It's not an automatic thing. And there are companies out there that do not go by ISO ratings at all.
That is correct.
Most of them do, but not all of them do. Some of them have their own ratings based on their own experience.
You stole my limelight. I was getting ready to say this, but since you said it, that's fine. That is true. There are a number of them that do not go by this standard, but most do.
That's why I was, I don't know who Wes has his insurance with. It's not, but it's automatic if they do, and most of them do. It's a very competitive field. But the main thing I'd like to call to attention, and this is what I'm excited about. You're going to, everybody's, most people, I should say, most people will experience a rate decrease as long as there's not any increases in losses in the state of Oklahoma.
Right.
And then the second thing is, this is great for our industry. It will bring more jobs and more businesses to Shawnee because of that, because it saves the industries thousands and thousands of dollars. And that's what I'd like to point out. This is, that's what's really good for it.
It's great. Thank you for sharing that. Other comments, I mean, this is a big deal. I kind of, I want everybody to realize, this is a very big deal that has happened here in Shawnee, and it's exciting for us.
I just have one quick question. The ISO rating of three or nine, does it matter whether the nearest fire station is volunteer versus paid?
Actually, that is a benefit, but it's not just a drastic benefit. It does help. Has a lot to do with how often they have someone there. Just purely on a volunteer status, ISO actually races the length of time it takes someone to get to that location, who they will be, and what equipment that they have to use. Any other questions?
No. Thank you for such a great report.
I would, I would also like to add, you were very, very kind, and I appreciate the fact that you included the, or you made special mention of the fire department and the work we did, but I would like to give some recognition to the water department. They've helped us.
That's true.
Forty percent of this comes from what they do, and they've really, they're a big benefit to us. Without them, we'd be lost. We would probably all be a nine or a ten rating. At the same time, the police department helps us through their dispatch system. That is involved in this as well. So I want to give credit where credit is due.
Very good. Very good. Thank you very much. Anything else under administrative?
Mr. Chairman, there are no other administrative reports.
Well, it, let's consider an executive session to discuss potential claims, litigation, or other options regarding encroachment into the city's utility service area by other entities as authorized by twenty-five O S three oh seven B four. I'll ask for a motion on that.
Were we going to do Commissioners' comments?
No, we're going to do that later. I thought we had to do that later.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second, okay. We will recess our commission meeting, move into executive session at this time.
I want to vote, Wes.
Oh, we do? All right, then vote. I'm sorry.
Let's do some days.
It's a long tag. Okay, call a roll. John wants to vote.
Harret?
Aye.
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 Stevens?
Aye.
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 I guess it's eyes.
Been ringing all the while. I'll be glad.
Call the City Commission back to order and state that no action was taken in executive session. And item number eight, consideration and possible action on matters discussed in executive session regarding potential claims, litigation, or other options regarding encroachment into the city's service area by other entities as authorized. I'll ask for a motion on this. No vote hearing?
There was no action taken.
No, no action. I'm saying, so we don't have to ask for a vote, because there'll be no, if no one votes on it, then it won't pass. Okay.
Right, it passes out with no action.
Okay, no action. Okay. Now it's time for Commissioners' comments, and it's a great time to talk among ourselves here, since we don't have a lot of people out there, so let's talk.
That I wanted to make, and I guess I'll just make it for the record, since there's nobody here really except us to talk to.
We are being recorded.
Oh, okay. Thanks for reminding me about that. Okay. Since it is Family Promise Week, and I saw that in my agenda packet, I went out and took a look at the website for Family Promise. And if you haven't done that, I would recommend doing that, especially this week. I know people that provide these types of services don't always want to toot their own horn, but this is one light that I think should not be hit under a bushel. These people do a lot of good. I was very impressed by what I read on that website. They help on the average of about seventeen families a year. And in addition to helping those families directly, they have like two hundred and eighty-five to three hundred families that they help through referrals and assistance. And this is really a hand up, not a handout, that these people provide. They do all this with volunteers from Family Promise and working with the churches throughout the community. So if you haven't gone out to that website, I don't have the website name, but if you'll just go out to Google and type in Family Promise of Shawnee, their website will pop up, and I recommend that you go out there and read that.
I happened to visit their main facility on the United Way tour. Very impressive what they do. Linda, I agree. I've not looked at their website, but I've personally been involved with it, and it's a very good thought. Commissioner Stevens, talk to us, huh?
No.
Nothing, nothing, just talk, huh? Okay, Linda, anything else? Commissioner here?
Nine-one-one, anything going on?
We've been talking about it. It's, we're so close to the election here at the county, Commissioner. I think we ought to just continue to have talks with those new elected officials when they get in.
I will make a comment. I have met with Melissa about that, and she's very optimistic. I was a little bit concerned when I read in the paper, the pay form comments, that they maybe didn't see a solution to nine-one-one being resolved. I don't know if you've read that. It was in the paper about that, and I'm kind of very disturbed, because I'm kind of optimistic, I tell you. I've met with the key person over in Tecumseh, and there's some people out there wanting to get this nine-one-one thing resolved and move forward with it. And I tell you, the leadership of that Melissa Dennis, I think, can really take us a long ways to making this happen. She's a very good, dynamic leader in that area. Other questions, Mr. Harret?
Pull committee.
James is.
He's gone. I can tell you, I was at the first meeting. They have met. They're having their second meeting tomorrow. Just tomorrow, no, no, Wednesday evening.
Wednesday.
John's on it. He's keeping them straight. He is.
Good day, old guy.
Their meeting, and John will be our key person to give us the updates as we come along, and that's a great question. I think they're mainly focused on the RFP. Is it RFP, if I have that right? What is that? RFQ. So they've got to select an architect and all that and get presentations by those before they move on really to anything else, is the way I understand it.
And we have a chairman of the committee, John Ayers. Is that right, Wes?
Right, and he's, so I think they're.
He's the one who's going to keep us under control, not John Winteringer.
He's a worker.
What's your name?
John Ayers. He was very involved in Tulsa area, and has lived here now for some time, lives at the Country Club, and has a marketing background and really that. Commissioner Hall?
I'm good. Good to be home.
Commissioner Winteringer, talk to us.
The new doors look really nice, kind of inviting in. They look very good, if you ask me.
John, you were just giving me a hard time about spending money on them before the meeting.
Well, you budget them or whatever. I'm agreeing with you, so, and inviting, so people can see in without opening the door.
We don't give you a hard time with our bid odds.
What else, John? Talk to us. You've got a list there.
I have a list. I want to know how, if anybody's using the homeland to pay their water bills.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure, talk to us.
I was going to save this for our, for our special call meeting, because it was one of the things I was going to talk about, but I'm pleased to note that every month, we just have more and more people using it. What I found kind of surprising, last month, we had twenty-five people using it, and they brought in about three thousand dollars. Just over the past weekend, we had twenty-eight people that used it. Just over the past weekend, we had twenty-eight people that used it just in the last two days.
Wow.
And I talked to the girls in the water department and said, "Is there something going on or we have a big cut off?" And like, "No, just normal weekend." So I think, um, more and more people are using it. Um, it started out, you know, slow and, and we started July first, but by, every month, we've just gained more and more people.
About how many a month for us?
I think, uh, not counting, you know, this, the current month that we're in, I think we could probably average around thirty people a month, regular people that use it and probably right around three thousand dollars a month is brought in.
Well, when are we going to announce to the public the new drive-by? My mother's, we're not going to?
No, I mean, anytime.
I mean, how do we do that? Because I don't, now, used to, like, my mother and elderly people down at the, uh, retirement center down here, community center, they all complained about, they had to get out of their car, step up on the curb and go over there and now they have it fixed where you don't even have to get out of your car. You just drive by where it used to be open and talk to someone, now then they have a slot and you can just reach out your car window and drop it in there. So I just think, I, I don't think many people in Shawnee know that that's.
Well, what we could do is we could, um, note it on our water bills, we have a spot in our water bills.
That's a great thought.
And put about three lines worth, so we could probably fit that in.
You know, a lot of these elderly people will drive ten to twelve miles to save forty-four cents.
I know.
And I'm one of those problems. I'm an elderly person. Okay, John, what else on your list?
What percentage do they get? I'm, I'm just trying to remember how it works, how they, how, how they get paid. Yeah.
Well, it's, Homeland doesn't get anything.
The company that has it.
The company, it depends on your method of payment. If you're paying by check or cash, there's a dollar, um, convenience fee. If you pay by credit card, it's a little more expensive, three dollars and fifty cents. We don't get any of that. That's all the credit card company. So it depends on your method of payment and it's, it's a convenience fee and, you know, credit cards. That's something that we have talked about, about how to address those convenience fees. Also in our, um, online payments with credit cards, there's a fee, so I think we're looking at that, maybe to do something about that in the future to see if possible.
We have direct withdrawal, is that any kind of?
No fee.
You know, just a comment, I, if you've heard, I've got a, a little office here downstairs and I'm now going up and going by the water department a lot and, and I'm amazed at what